Claire, can I get a call to order? Real call, please.
Mr. Holt?
Here.
Ms. Macronis?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Present.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is item D, recognitions and presentations. Dr. Streeter.
You guys ready to join me?
Sure.
Down below. Okay, this is gonna be fun, because I think almost everybody in here is gonna be holding something here in a second. So tonight, we are celebrating and recognizing several of our schools for receiving the state-level recognition at the annual Celebrating PBIS in Arizona event that took place on February 6th. PBIS is Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. Schools are recognized for fully implementing one or more tiers of the Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports model at their school site. And then, the Model School Award is given to schools that the AZ PBIS Awards Committee has verified to have implementation fidelity of all three tiers. The names of Arizona Model School sites are posted on the AZ PBIS social media accounts and the website. And we have several schools that we will be recognizing. So I'd like to first bring up our Level 3 Award winner. That's Tier 1 and Tier 2 Fidelity. I need the Gladden Farms team. And then our Level 4 Award winners. This is Tier 1, 2, and 3 Fidelity. Can I have the Coyote Trail team? The DeGrasia team? Where's my Dove Mountain team? Estes Elementary? Morana Middle School? Get the start. Do you want any on our board? Very lonely over here. The Picture Rocks Elementary team? Tortalita Middle School? Where's my Twin Peaks team? And special congratulations to Butterfield and Rattlesnake Ridge for receiving the Model School Award that is given to schools that the AZ PBIS Awards Committee has verified to have implementation fidelity of all three tiers on multiple evidence-based instruments. And again, the names of those Model Schools will be posted on AZ PBIS social media accounts and the website. And when schools in Arizona express interest in PBIS and a desire to see implementation in action, it's the Arizona Model School sites that are the sites that the advisory group recommends for visits. So congratulations to Butterfield. Where's my Butterfield team? Okay, they're all here. Ally, you have to get a photo. Look at this. It's a community effort. You guys are out. I think we should stay. You move over. All right. So I feel like we stretched Ally's capabilities, so we're just gonna have Sherri Atterberry come up this time. Let me come right here. What kind of... sort of... So tonight, we get to recognize Sherri Atterberry, the School Climate and Connectedness Coordinator, for receiving the 2023-2024 Celeste Nameth PBIS Leadership Award. In 2022, the AZ PBIS Advisory Council created the Celeste Nameth Leadership Award, which was named in honor of the award's first recipient. This annual award recognizes a leader who has made outstanding contributions that resulted in increased recognition of the benefits of PBIS implementation throughout Arizona. One Arizona PBIS leader is selected for this award annually. The award is presented to an individual for their outstanding contributions through policy, practice, and/or education, resulting in increased recognition of PBIS in Arizona. The recipient of this award demonstrates a firm commitment to improving the lives of Arizona students, the educators who teach them, and the community in which the early childhood center, school, district, or charter resides, through innovation, creativity, and the implementation of PBIS. Sherri is a dedicated leader and champion of PBIS in Arizona, not only in the Morana Unified School District, but throughout the state. She exhibits leadership characteristics, is a positive role model, and inspiration for others. Sherri has served as a judge on the Awards Committee and became co-director of the PBIS Advisory Group this year, now named the Arizona PBIS Coalition. So Sherri, congratulations.
Congratulations to everybody. Next item is board communication. Is there anybody wishing to speak?
I have something. Thank you. Dr. Streeter, President Holt, fellow board members, staff, and our community members. I want to thank everybody for attending tonight's meeting. It was my pleasure to attend the Strategic Planning Committee meetings at Twin Peaks. It is great to have the participation of so many stakeholders in developing our district's future. The Board and Admin recently had our Board Retreat, where we had the opportunity to tour our new K-8 school and our Morana Vista Academy. It was so insightful to see the progress and witnessed the vision come to fruition. With my new employer, I've had some overlap between my career and my board service, and as such, I've been able to attend the Southern Arizona School Business Officials Luncheon. This was insightful to have the opportunity to discuss financial issues with other district CFOs. And I look forward to continuing our work on the Strategic Planning Committee on February 18th at 5:00 PM at Quell Run. I encourage our stakeholders to attend and contribute to our district in a meaningful way. We have much to celebrate in our district, and I want all of us to keep our Morana values with five-star service and expectations. I hope everyone looks for ways to collaborate with our students, staff, and district to inspire our students to learn today and lead tomorrow. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Yes, please. Thank you. There's been a lot going on. It's been a busy first month for me. I had the opportunity to visit Twin Peaks K-8 School with Dr. Streeter and Mr. Holt this month, where I had the pleasure of spending time with both parents, teachers, staff, and students. One of my biggest takeaways from the visit was the overwhelming sense of community among every group, and I was very proud to see that. I sat in on a hiring committee for a principal position and attended my first 2340 Foundation Board Meeting, which was a great opportunity to see and learn more about the support they provide to the district. Our daughter Paige participated in the Sing for Morana event at Dove Mountain, and I was joined by a few family members of mine for the string fling at Morana High School. Fine arts and music programs are such a special thing, especially when students have the opportunity to shine and showcase their hard work. I'm thankful to the teachers and the staff that helped provide that opportunity, especially ones that fall on Saturday, so thank you. I had the opportunity to see the construction of the Morana Vista Academy and the Tangerine Farms K-8 School, and it's very nice to see those investments materializing, and I'm very excited about those two resources that we'll have in our district. It was an honor to be present at the presentation of both the Teacher of the Year and the Staff Member of the Year awards, celebrating the outstanding contributions from our team. I feel like there's so many good things going on in our district, and I'm proud of our progress. And at the same time, we continue to address areas that need attention and ensure that we're providing the best possible education and environment for both students and staff. Thank you.
Any more else?
I can ditto what Ms. Macronis said about the strategic plan, visiting the schools. Some of my highlights this month was to serve on the Principal Interview Committee for one of our elementary schools. It's an excellent process, and I think we've received some very good feedback on how good that process is. I also attended my first 2340 Board Meeting. Roy and I've spent a lot of time together this week. And also to attend the Support Staff of the Year Award and the Teacher of the Year Awards also this week. It's been an exciting month, and I'm really excited going forward. We're doing great things in this district. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm not gonna echo what all they said, but I was present for 90% of it. I just want to speak a little bit about my trip to DC. I spent about five days in Washington DC going through the Advocacy and Equity Institute, and then had a data lobby on Capitol Hill with our legislators. And I just want everybody to kind of be aware of a few issues going on in local and in national that is affecting education. And so if you have concerns about what is happening, to please contact your reps and make your voice heard. And that concludes our remarks, and we're gonna move into remarks from the public. First person is Arlene Watkins. First person is Arlene Watkins.
I'm Arlene Watkins, and I'm a retired middle school and high school teacher. I taught English, social studies, and business. And I'm here today to address the importance of teachers encountering misinformation in the classroom. In my classroom, every year, we had a debate series. And my students were required to thoroughly study both sides of an issue because they never knew till they got up to the podium which side they were going to have to speak to based on a coin toss. I've always thought it was really important for students to understand all sides of an issue. On the other hand, I was also very quick to point out misinformation in any context. And I think that's a particularly important issue today. If someone in a position of authority makes a false statement, it's the teacher's responsibility to point it out. Now, in my classroom, I never shared my political views. I never shared my opinions because I'm very much aware of the tremendous power that a teacher has. But I feel that we have an important responsibility to point out misinformation. Because if we don't do that, what else are we there for? So for example, if the president of this country were to say that a political event never took place or attributed a quote to the wrong person, I think it's only fair that a teacher point that out. But my concern is that in this partisan environment, even facts can be construed as political statements. So I'm here to ask the board, parents, and the community to always ask, is this statement a fact? And if it is a fact, please be grateful that we have teachers who are knowledgeable enough and brave enough to call out misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Eric Carr.
Hi, I'm Eric. I've always been Eric, and my birth certificate says I'm male. I look like a guy, right? But I'm also intersex, which in my case means I have chromosomes that make me both male and female. I was born externally male, but inside I have female organs too, and my body does not produce testosterone at all. As a kid, I seemed like a typical boy, and I loved school, loved school. But when puberty hit, things changed. I started growing breasts and hips, and my features became more feminine. That's when school became a nightmare with bullying, rumors, and constant questions about what I was. I tried to hide my breasts by binding them and completely stopped wearing shorts because I had no body hair, leading to accusations of shaving my legs. I can't even repeat the names that people shouted at me in the hallways. By 10th grade, I was one of those kids who sat alone at lunch, feeling completely isolated and humiliated. But then Mrs. Lyons, a teacher at my school, noticed me being bullied and called me into her office. She was not my teacher at the time, but she saved me by explaining variations in sex in nature plus different cultural and historical perspectives on sex and gender. We didn't have terms like intersex back in the 80s when I was a student, but she showed me that I was not just some unnatural freak. She is my hero. And in her honor, I want to thank all the teachers and staff anywhere who stand up for students and for science. Right now, there is a national effort to erase people like me with an oversimplification or distortion of science in order to promote the myth that there is only male and female. But the truth is, intersex people like me make up about 1.7% of the population, as common as red hair or green eyes. So I'd like you to think about all the people you know who have red hair or green eyes, and then imagine how you'd feel if teachers were instructed to teach that they don't exist. Morana High School likely has around 40 intersex students, and there are probably more than 200 in the district. Denying that these kids exist harms them, just as it harmed me when I was their age. This kind of erasure empowers bullies and leaves children who don't fit neatly into the male-female binary with lifelong scars. Sadly, because intersex isn't often taught, many people don't even discover that they are intersex until later in life. And this can lead to misdiagnosis, body shame, identity crises, and many other issues. In fact, there might even be some people here tonight who will later discover that they're intersex or that their kids are. Now, because of surgical and hormonal treatments, no one would know that I'm intersex unless I told them. But in light of current events, I felt it was important to come forward and put a face to what might otherwise be an abstract idea. Morana Schools have the opportunity to teach students to love scientific inquiry, to question, to learn for ourselves, to speak the truth, and to do their own research, the core values of science and education. Along with Mrs. Lyons, the teacher who saved me, you are all of my heroes now too. Thank you.
I've got something to say, Ms. McCronus. I want to thank you for sharing your story with us. Thank you for needing to hear it.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna move on to Item G, Superintendent Comments.
President Holt, governing board members, members of the audience, it's kind of been said, it's been a really busy past month. I think we came out of the holiday break in January was fast and furious. And many of the things that have been shared, I am gonna echo. And I'll start with the January 14th Strategic Planning Community, where we welcome close to 70 community members for our third Strategic Planning Committee meeting. Our focus has been really centered around taking the information from that October 4th summit and synthesizing that information down to a coordinated plan for our future. The group has a fairly close-to-final draft, I'll say, of a portrait of a graduate that we've looked at and will be coming to the board again soon. And now we're finalizing the... Most people call it the SWAC analysis. In Morana, our students changed it to the COWS analysis. We thought that was a little more fun than the traditional strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. And then, of course, we'll be moving into the goal identification and setting stage. So I want to thank our community for their continued collaboration through that process. Also, on January 15th, we had our District Spelling Bee. Congratulations to my Rattlesnake folks, Rattlesnake Ridge. Sixth grader Bryant Banzaff, who became the back-to-back District Spelling Bee champion. We want to wish Bryant well, as well as we want to wish our second-place finisher Piper Swegel from Twin Peaks, Ella Reed from Morana Middle School, and Kennedy Smith from Tortolita, wish them the best of luck as they go to the Pima County Spelling Bee this Saturday. So congratulations to all of our district participants and, of course, those winners. Mr. Alexander talked about the January 24th Twin Peaks visit, and I want to thank the Twin Peaks team for opening their doors to Mr. Alexander, Mr. Holt, and myself for our Superintendent Board Campus Visit. We had a busy day, action-packed agenda that allowed us to visit several classrooms, meet with representatives from each employee group, as well as meet with student leaders and connect with parents from the PTO. We heard common themes around the community feel that Mr. Alexander talked about that's really in place at Twin Peaks. Specific comments were, "The best thing here is the family, the community, and just the overall staff." I love the teamwork here. There's a family and community feel here. This is as hard a working group as there is. The comments from the parents and students were equally enthusiastic about that same community feel. As we heard them say, "People love my kids and look after them here. Everyone knows my kids, and we have great teachers." The twin team should be incredibly proud of their hard work, and we're all looking forward to the continued great things that are coming your way as well. And of course, the January 25th Board Retreat, I just want to thank our governing board, who through an incredibly busy January, set aside a Saturday for our mid-year retreat. We had a great day that included the tours of the Morana Vista Academy and our newest K-8 Tangerine Farms. And additionally, we were able to provide some updates from each of our senior staff departments based on the goals that were set this past summer with our governing board. So thank you for your continued dedication, your time, your great questions, the input and feedback that was provided as we continue to move forward in a positive direction. And I'm gonna share... This one's... I attended a U of A basketball game. Those of you that know me... So we were... Back on January 27th, we got to celebrate Morana High School's own Teresa Antoffer, who was recognized as one of the finalists for the 2024-2025 University of Arizona Amazing Teacher of the Years. And this Saturday, we get to attend another basketball game to celebrate Mountain Views Elliot Beck as an additional finalist. And then on February 28th, we'll find out who is selected as the overall winner. So if nothing else, between number three Iowa State on the 27th and number six Houston this weekend, our teachers do a tremendous job of picking the games that they have me attending. I want to thank them for that. And finally, my last thing is I just want to thank our amazing counselors for their incredibly hard work and dedication to our students. We were able to recognize them during National School Counselors Week during the week of February 3rd to the 7th. We are incredibly fortunate to not only have school counselors, but to have the caliber of counselors that we have at each of our schools. So thank you. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Streeter. Next up is Item H, the Consent Agenda.
I move that the governing board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sir, a second.
I need to pull one item.
What item is it?
It's the... It's in H6. It's the Elliot Beck travel request.
Okay. Motion that Item H6, Elliot Beck travel is put in unfinished business. Is there...
I gotta make a new motion. I move that the governing board approve the consent agenda with the exception of H6.
Sir, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We will now move on to Item IY...
H6.
Yeah, H6, which will be unfinished business. I'm gonna pull up the coffee, Dr.... I guess Kristen, maybe.
All right. So Item H6 is a request for Elliot Beck to travel to Chula Vista, California to attend the curated High Tech High School visits for educators on February 21st, 2025. The intent of this trip is to help inform him as he is going to be a math teacher at Morana Vista Academy next year. And he has an opportunity to go to the school site and learn about their problem-based learning systems.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the request for out-of-state travel for Mr. Beck.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so the reason I wanted to pull this to discuss separately, it's not because of Elliot Beck. I don't even know... I don't know who he is. But... So he's wanting to go on travel to learn something, apparently, that is in line with his new position over at the Vista Academy. And my issue is that the board has not been informed about exactly what the vision and mission of the Vista Academy is. Last year, we got some fairly high-level concepts, but nothing specific. And so now, we have staff who are wanting to go on travel using district money for something that the board has not been fully informed.
Is there another perspective?
Yes, I've got something to say. Just so everybody knows, the Morana Vista Academy was discussed at the January 26-23 Board Meeting, the April 27-23 Board Meeting, the June 8-23 Board Meeting, the 11-9-23 Board Meeting, and the 11-30-23 Board Meeting. We also have approved travel for the Marista Vista Academy Director to go to Ohio, California, Idaho. And we approved travel for the superintendent and the director to travel to... Or, excuse me, the superintendent to present the Vista Academy at a conference in Houston, Texas. And at the 9-26 Study Session, the board approved a trip for the superintendent and the director of the Vista Academy to travel to North Dakota. So I find it very disingenuous that you're refusing this request based on that you don't know what the vision of the academy is.
I'm not refusing their request at all. And it's great that you came prepared.
Very prepared.
It's almost as if you had new and advanced information on this. So I just want to know... Okay, so back in '23, there is no way that the board could have been given any degree of specificity about what the Vista Academy, what the curriculum was gonna be, how many staff were gonna go there, whether they were gonna provide transportation, yada, yada, yada. And...
What does yada, yada, yada mean?
All kinds of other things.
Okay, well...
You've never seen Seinfeld, you've never lived in New York.
Really fast, really fast.
Tom, you attended a tour of a IQ's Academy in Casa Grande.
I did.
So you know what the scope of what this plan was.
That was conceptual. And Dr. Streeter, even at that time, said that Vista is not gonna look like this. It'll be similar, but...
So I just want to...
But Morana's different. That the purpose of that school in Casa Grande is quite different from the way that Dr. Streeter described the Vista Academy.
Tom, I just want to say, we, four of us up here, took a tour of Morana Vista that you were not at, where we also were provided information. And so there's kind of a saying, right? It's like you take out what you put in. And so if you are not happy with the direction of Morana Vista or feel there's not a direction, I would just question that because the other four of us up here feel comfortable with the vision.
I don't know what the direction is because it's never been communicated.
I'm pretty sure it's a personalized learning academy, correct?
What does that mean?
What's the question that you have so that we can move off of this item?
I've already shared my questions with you. So just pull up your email, and the three questions are in there.
Tom, I'm gonna ask you not to be condescending. I'm just gonna ask you nicely. Do not be condescending.
And I would ask the same of you. What does a personalized learning academy mean? What does it look like? Because when I think of personalized learning academy, I think of a place where students are gonna go, and they're gonna develop their own curriculum and kind of proceed through on an individual basis.
We have a motion, and I'd like to call the question.
There is a call to question. Can I get a roll call though, Gloria?
For what?
Robert's rule states that if there's a motion and a second, and after there's been a discussion, any person can call the question, which would require a mandatory vote. So I'm calling for us to vote to stop the discussion and for us to vote.
Okay, so I don't get my question. Okay.
Gloria, can I have a roll call though?
Mr. Holt?
Aye.
Ms. McCronus?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Aye.
With that, Item H6 passes. New business discussion approval of DeGrasse Elementary School Principal appointment. Dr. Streeter?
Mr. President, governing board members, members of the audience, Tanya Caldwell is currently serving as the principal at DeGrasse Elementary School, a position that she has held since 2019. She will be retiring effective June 30th, 2025. As a result, the principal position for DeGrasse Elementary was posted. 14 applications were received for the opening. A screening committee, including a governing board member, a principal, two teachers, a support staff member, a parent, an assistant superintendent, and myself vetted applications and selected four individuals for the interview. The candidates were interviewed by the same committee, and candidates were forwarded for a final interview with myself and governing board president, Mr. Holt. We are pleased tonight to recommend Mr. David Dooley for the position of DeGrasse Elementary School Principal. David Dooley currently serves as the Associate Principal at DeGrasse Elementary School. Prior to his move into administration, Mr. Dooley served as an instructional technology coach and was a third-grade teacher.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board appoint David Dooley as the principal of DeGrasse Elementary School effective July 1, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Next up is Item J2, discussion approval of Tortolita Middle School Principal appointment. Dr. Streer?
Mr. President, governing board members, members of our audience, Shelley Veru is currently serving as the principal at Tortolita Middle School, a position that she has held since 2019. And she will be retiring effective June 30th, 2025. As a result, the principal...
As a result, the principal position for Tortalita Middle School was posted. Ten applications were received for the opening. A screening committee, including a governing board member, a principal, two teachers, support staff member, parent, and assistant superintendent, and myself vetted the applications and selected four individuals to interview. The candidates were interviewed by this committee, and two candidates were forwarded for a final interview with myself and Governing Board President, Mr. Holt. Tonight, we are pleased to recommend Jessica Franklin for the position of Tortalita Middle School Principal. Jessica Franklin currently serves as an Associate Principal at Tortalita Middle School. Prior to her move into administration, she was an instructional coach, a smaller learning community coordinator, and a middle school science teacher.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board appoint Jessica Franklin as the Principal of Tortalita Middle School effective July 1, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Next up is J3, discussion approval of MCAT High School Principal. Dr. Streeter?
Mr. President, Governing Board Members, members of the audience, Denise Green is currently serving as the Principal at MCAT High School, a position that she has held since 2013, and she will be retiring effective June 30th, 2025. As a result, the principal position for MCAT High School was posted. Fifteen applications were received for the opening. A screening committee that included a principal, teacher, support staff member, parent, assistant superintendent, and myself vetted applications selected four individuals to interview. Candidates were interviewed by this committee, and two candidates were forwarded for a final interview with myself and Governing Board President, Mr. Holt. We are pleased tonight to recommend Elizabeth Shimke for the position of MCAT High School Principal. Elizabeth Shimke currently serves as the Coordinator of Alternative Instruction at Micah Mountain High School, and prior to that, she served as an Assistant to the Principal, Student Achievement Teacher, and English Teacher at Pantano High School. And in addition, she has taught online courses in English and Social Studies.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board appoint Elizabeth Shimke as the Principal of MCAT High School effective July 1, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Beth, I just want to welcome you to Miranda. All those in favor? Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item J4, discussion approval of the 2024-2025 School District Annual Expenditure Budget Revision Number One, not as fun, Mr. Bogart.
Thank you, Chairman Holt, Governing Board Member, Superintendent Streeter. This is an exceptionally fun board agenda item to review. As you'll recall, in, in, over the summer, the board adopted our FY25 expenditure budget. The practice is that if in December, our ADM doesn't match with what we had projected, we would be forced to do a revision in December. Our expenditure budget matched enough to where we didn't have to do that. So this is the first revision to our FY25 expenditure budget. This is based on a 5,013 base level support. We're looking at about a $12,200, uh, 200 ADM for this year. That's a little bit of a decrease in your general ADM, but our category B ADM went from 2,400 to 2,493, which made up for some of that deficiency. In the end, the MNO budget capacity is 115 million, capital budget capacity a little over 10 million, classroom site fund budget capacity 12 million and change. We've got bond capacity for 75 million. I don't think we're gonna hit all of that expense this year. And then 21 million in federal funding, and about 48 million in other funds throughout our general ledger. Overall, capacity for expense this year, 280 million, approximately. We're not gonna spend 280 million, it'll probably be around 200 million again, but that's the capacity we have to spend this year. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Is there a motion?
I'm, I move that the governing board approve the 2024-2025 School District Annual Expenditure Budget Revision Number One.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is J5, discussion approval of additional staffing for Play and Learn. Ms. Linsel.
Good evening, President Holt, Governing Board Members and Community. Tonight, I bring before you a request for two special education aides at our PAL preschool program, where they are experiencing significant growth, both in terms of student enrollment and the complexity of those students' needs. When I wrote this memo, we had 215 students at PAL with classrooms containing 13 to 15 students. We do expect more ongoing evaluations and anticipate we'll finish the year with close to, or between 200 and, 230 and 250 students. In light of the substantial growth in student enrollment and the increased complexity of student needs, and the staffing challenges we currently face, we need to hire two additional aides to ensure the continued success of the PAL program. The cost for these two aides will be paid out of the IDEA grant. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board approve the addition of two special education aides at the Play and Learn PAL effective immediately.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Denise, you're up again. Discussion approval of new staffing for Tangerine Farms K8 School.
Okay. As you know, we're opening Tangerine Farms K8 School this August, and in order to adequately staff this school, we're requesting the following new full-time equivalent positions. Two elementary teacher positions, one and a half middle school positions, one literacy lead, instructional coach, special education teacher, school psychologist, adaptive cluster teacher, behavior cluster teacher, and one speech-language pathologist. In addition to these positions, we have moved nine current classroom teachers from Gladden Farms Elementary, three from Estes Elementary, and a .5 from Miranda Middle School. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board approve new staff of two elementary teachers, 1.5 middle school teachers, one literacy lead, one instructional coach, one special ed teacher, one school psychologist, one adaptive cluster teacher, one behavior cluster teacher, and one speech-language pathologist at Tangerine Farms K8 School effective for the 2025-2026 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have some questions.
Yep.
So, how many, how many new students are we expecting this school to, to attract?
Thomas, do you remember what we came up with?
So, it's really hard to tell. What I would say is that the budget is budgeting for 20. We would take anything beyond that.
20.
We're budgeting for 20. We're accounting for close to 400 or so students involving the school. How many of those are new students? You don't know.
Right, okay, so where's the money coming from? Because 20, 20 new students, at $7,000 a student, does not cover this payroll.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that question, Mr. Carlson. Our halftime CFO has done a really good job implementing strategies for this transition. Currently, we've been moving DAA money from capital to MNO. We've locked in about a million dollars of that, so that when this happened, we would be able to pay for that with existing funding.
Okay.
So we've been capitalizing on, on that million dollars in the capital fund. Now we're gonna slide that over to MNO to account for this. So it should be accounted for in that way.
Okay. And so then, the, the nine staff that we moved from, I can't read it, but whatever that was...
Yeah, Gladden Farms, nine positions from Gladden Farms.
So, so we're gonna fill those, we're gonna backfill those as well?
No, we've eliminated nine classroom positions from Gladden Farms for next year.
Is that because kids that would normally fill that are moving over to the new school? Okay, I got you. Okay, cool, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Discussion, J7, discussion approval of new high school courses. Ms. Reedy?
Good evening, President Holt, members of the board, Dr. Streeter, members of senior staff, and our in-person and virtual audience. I am bringing two high school CTE programs for you for approval, and within those programs are the classes Business Management 1, 2, and 3, 4, as well as Laboratory Assisting 1, 2, and 3, 4. Both of these programs are two-year programs. These courses, the courses in these programs address the growing workforce demands and increase, and increasing student interest in business management and laboratory assisting careers. The Business Management Program develops leadership, organizational, and decision-making skills vital for success in diverse industries. The Laboratory Assisting Program equips students with technical expertise in clinical procedures, phlebotomy, and lab operations, supporting the healthcare sector. Both of these programs align with industry needs, offer, offering hands-on training to ensure students are career-ready while meeting their academic and professional aspirations. It's important to note that the program descriptions, industry credentials, coherent sequence, and teacher certification requirements will be directly, we have pulled those directly from the Arizona Department of Education CTE Department. If approved, these courses will be offered at Miranda, at the Miranda Vista Academy campus for the 2025-2026 school year.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board approve the new high school course proposal as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just a quick question. In our report, it says it's a two-year program. I mean, it's back-to-back. Is that gonna be scheduled in for like kids that need to take AP as well? Are they gonna be listed as a high priority? Because this is gonna be programmed in a certain period.
Correct.
So are they gonna be listed as high priority for things like AP classes as well, so they can still take full opportunity?
So it's my understanding, in my conversations with Mrs. Golikowski, that students will be able to, they are going to be prioritized, so that that way, students have the opportunity to attend either Mountain View or Miranda High School and/or attend Miranda Vista Academy full-time.
Perfect. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item J8 is discussion approval of 2025-2026 Governing Board Meetings, Time and Location. Dr. Streeter?
Mr. President, Governing Board Members, members of the audience, this agenda item provides an opportunity to discuss and take action on the scheduled time and location for the 2025-2026 Miranda Unified School District Regular Governing Board Meetings. In your packet is the recommended schedule for the 2025-2026 school year. If approved, the meeting dates will be officially posted on the outside bulletin board at the Scott D. Foster Administration Center and listed on our district's website.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board approve the 2025-2026 Regular Governing Board Meeting Schedule as presented. I further move that the regular board meetings be held at 6:00 PM at the Ed Honi Miranda Municipal Complex.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is J10, discussion approval of Governing Board...
No, J9.
Oh, J9, just kidding.
You missed one.
Discussion approval of policy considerations, A, the, A policy, B, E, D, B, A, and Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. Dr. Streeter?
Mr. President, Governing Board Members, members of the audience, this item is based on the conversation that was held during the January 25, 2025 Governing Board Retreat. Policy B, E, D, B, A, which is Agenda Preparation and Dissemination, is being brought forward with the recommended revisions. Those revisions are in your packet. You can see they're, they're minor changes to the actual policy. The revisions are just that a board member would notify the superintendent of a request to place an item for consideration on the agenda by 12:00 PM, at least four days, not five workdays before the meeting.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board approve revisions to policy B, E, D, B, A, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is J10, discussion approval of Governing Board Superintendent Communication Protocols and Shared Agreements. Dr. Streeter?
Mr. President, Governing Board Members, members of the audience, the governing board developed the attached Governing Board and Superintendent Communication Protocols and Shared Agreements during a board study session in January of 2024. These protocols and agreements were reviewed during the January 25, 2025 Board Retreat. This is my recommendation to the governing board to once again approve these documents.
Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board approve the Governing Board and Superintendent Communication Protocols and Shared Agreements.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
J11, discussion approval of Tangerine Farms K8, K8 School Mascot. Mr. Singer?
Good evening, President Holt, members of the board and community. As we engaged in a new school in the Miranda Unified School District, we sought input from our community regarding a selection of the new school mascot for Tangerine Farms K8. To ensure a transparent inclusive, inclusive decision-making process, we conducted two surveys, inviting parents, students, family, community members to share their preferences. The top three mascot choices from approximately 1,400 responses, 1,400, were Hila Monster, Havelinas, and Rams. After reviewing the community feedback and considering practical implications, we recommend selecting the Havelina as the official mascot for the Tangerine Farms K8 School for the following reasons. Strong community support, appealing and practical design, and financial responsibility, meaning that the Havelina outfit was easily accessible.
Even though I don't agree with this decision, I move that the governing board approve the Havelina as the new mascot for the Tangerine Farms K8 School. Should've been the Stingrays.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, there's gonna be a lot of discussion about this. I have been in Zach's office probably three times telling him to customize the Hila Monster outfit, but it did not get traction.
Looks like a dinosaur.
It does, so, that is why it's not Hila Monster. Is there any other discussion?
I am happy with it. I like the Havelina.
They protect their young. I mean, what...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Zach. Next up is item J12, present, presenting, presentation and adoption of statement of charges for cause of dismissal of Brendan Main. Dr. Streeter, will you please present the statement of charges at this time?
Mr. President, Governing Board Members, members of the audience, I hereby present the governing board with a statement of charges against teacher Brayden Main. The governing board has had the opportunity to review this statement of charges, and I request that the governing board take the following actions relative to those statement of charges. One, that the governing board conclude, after having reviewed the statement of charges, that the district has sufficient cause to dismiss Brayden Main if the allegations are true. Two, that the governing board vote to provide Brayden Main with notice of its intent to dismiss him from his employment if the governing board makes the determination that the alleged conduct is cause for dismissal. And three, that the governing board designate a hearing officer to hold the hearing, hear the evidence, prepare a record, and issue a recommendation to the governing board for action if a hearing is requested by Mr. Main. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Streeter. The administration has prepared a document entitled Statement of Charges that the administration process has, proposes be issued by the governing board to Brendan Main. This document contains charges and the facts supporting those charges. The administration is asking the governing board to determine that the charges against the teacher, if true, are cause for his dismissal. Tonight, we will not determine whether the allegations are true or false, and cannot devolve into details of this case. Tonight, we are deciding only whether the statement of charges presented caused to dismiss the teacher if the allegations are true. The administration is also asking the governing board to provide the teacher with notice of intent to terminate him if the governing board makes the, the determination that his alleged contact is cause for dismissal. If the board adopts the charges and approves ensuing a notice of intent to dismiss, Mr. Main will be provided an opportunity to request a hearing to contest, contest the charges. Finally, the administration is requesting that the board approve, the board approve keeping Mr. Main assignment to home with pay until dismissal proceedings are over, and to approve the use of a hearing officer for dismissal purposes. We will need some motions to forward with the statement of charges. Is there a motion?
I move the governing board adopt the statement of charges regarding district employee Brendan Main.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that the governing board direct Superintendent Dr. Streeter to provide Mr. Main with a notice of intent to dismiss at the expiration of 10 days from the date of service of the notice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The governing board will now need to designate a hearing officer to hold this, to hold the hearing, hear, hear the evidence, prepare, and prepare a record and issue a recommendation to governing board for action. Is there a motion?
I move that the governing board approve the use of a hearing officer for the dismissal hearing regarding Mr. Maine's employment, and that if a hearing officer is not selected by mutual agreement of the parties, that the governing board authorizes the superintendent to select a hearing officer from the list of hearing officers approved by the Arizona Department of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item K is board member requests for future agenda items. Is there any? Next item is item L, future meetings. They will all be held here at six P M. on March thirteenth, April tenth, and May eighth. Next item is adjournment. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.